Okay, let's call our meeting in order. Karen, do we have attendance?
I'm attending, yeah.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
I second the motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, any discussion on the agenda?
I don't think so.
No discussion?
Looks good.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, great. Um, let's see, so let's move on to the approval of our minutes, or no, the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, discussion, is there any discussion?
Looks good again.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Um, so do we have anyone signed up for citizens comments?
I do. Let's go back and hear the call.
We want to talk about lighting issues, okay.
Come to the podium, please.
You have three minutes, sorry.
Okay, can we wait until my associate gets here?
Not unless you want to wait till the very end of the meeting.
That's fine, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Any others?
Okay, great. Let's move on to Bill with financial reports.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
You have my report for January there in front of you. As of January 31st, 2019, we have collected 15,686,663 dollars of our budgeted tax receipts. That's about 96.9% of that. Total revenue, cash revenue collected to date as of January 31st is 15,953,420 dollars. There were no budget items that were over budget. For the grants, we did expense the remaining 600 dollars of the City Lord grant. So Victoria, last week you had a question about that. That was for our Becoming American series. So unless anybody has any questions, that's all I have.
I'm just really impressed that your projections are very closely aligned with. I was finding the variance is very modest, so, yeah, looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bill. Great, moving on, committee reports. The executive committee met earlier before our board meeting, and we went through a couple items that will be coming up in next month's meeting. It was, it's a couple policies, a couple policies that we're taking a closer look at. We had Josie and staff take a look at, or she's having us take a look at, too. It includes FMLA compliance, revision on meeting use, meeting use policy, and then we took a closer look at our trespass policy, too. So, well, I don't know, if anyone in the committee wants to speak to or discuss, I think we're pretty early on.
Yeah, we'll have first read of policies next, at the next board meeting, full board meeting, and then the new policies will go up for vote in April. And there, I think we're looking at minor but meaningful changes in terms of meeting room use and smoking policy in the building, so, yes.
Are there goals that were, that you all have been discussing, sorry, are there goals that you all have been discussing that you're trying to reach with revising the policies?
Josie is bringing these forward as tweaks that need to be looked at based on building use essentially, right?
Some of it, some of it's legal, some of it is changes in the law, like FMLA, the changes in the law, we're updating our policy, and we have to, we have to, we had to open contracts to do that, so we've been working with the unions on that. And then the policy changes are use of the building, smoking, and then the trespass, looking at how we, what, exactly how we handle those. So it's the building room use one I'm bringing because of case, case law that's happening around specific uses of public buildings. And then the smoking one is about vaping, for the most part, and how we're wanting to add that into our policy about no smoking in the library.
You'll look at full policy language and have time to ask questions and talk about it, yeah?
You'll have the old policy with the redactions and what the new policy will look like, and you'll have a month to consider it before you vote on it.
In April.
Yeah.
Great, any other, Corinne, does she want to say anything, or?
I have a question, was I supposed to go to this meeting?
No.
Okay.
We're going to rotate folks out, I think because where our schedules are kind of, so depending on, I think, what's on the agenda, we'll figure out.
So Corinne came to the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, can you be transparent about that, please, and make sure that we know when the meetings are happening in advance? I think that's a reasonable thing to ask, to know when executive committee meetings are happening, for it to be communicated about. Because I had no idea there was going to be an executive committee meeting. It's okay that you're rotating, I simply want to know when there's going to be a meeting. Like, if this is a surprise, surprises, not, like, you had some policy, I just didn't know you were actually having a meeting, and it's not a big deal, I just didn't know. And this also doesn't mirror the past, how things have gone in the past. This is a new thing, this is a change.
It's not a change.
Wait, did you, did you rotate Ed out? Because I don't think Ed came to a single executive committee.
The, it's not a change in terms of the cycle, so the executive committee has been meeting pretty regularly at the, in the hour before the full board meeting, for probably the last two years.
Two years, yeah.
And I think the question of rotation is the first time that this group has met. It can, and, and in full transparency, I think it's really the president's prerogative to call the executive committee meeting, and also to, and also to determine who is invited to that meeting of the executive officers, which, and only three of us can participate.
Right.
So as an executive officer, I think that it is important for all of the executive officers to know that, that a committee meeting is happening, and I think that's great feedback.
Yeah, yeah.
And also.
I'm not trying to be hostile.
No, I think it's.
We had committed to it, you know, a week ago, a week or so ago.
Okay.
And it was just really according to our schedules and some of the things that we knew that we wanted to talk about, so, I think that's, I can give you a heads up.
So, but, but you're saying we knew, we talked about, and I'm, I'm on the executive committee.
You are not on the executive committee, you are an executive officer.
Okay.
You are only on the executive committee when you are invited to go to an executive committee meeting by the president. It's a weird, it's a weird thing, it's part of our bylaws, because only three of us can meet at a time.
Time, right.
Okay. Except if there's four of us, then we are under open meeting fact, or.
So we, we as the two of you, the president and the vice president, we should think of it that way.
I mean, it's the president's discretion.
Okay, okay.
So I don't necessarily, I don't call the meetings as vice president, Lynn calls meetings as the president.
Okay.
And she can make the assignments as the vice president.
So there's going to be times you don't go because you're out of town, or you're traveling, or for whatever reason.
Or Corinne doesn't go, or whomever.
Okay, okay, we'll figure it out.
Or Lynn doesn't go.
But I'll always assume that there's a meeting before the board meeting, and maybe I'll go.
Yes, I think that's a fair assumption, although we have not discussed a pattern of meetings.
I mean, it's just, it's a matter of convenience, since we're already here for the board meeting, that the executive committee has convened, but it's very easy for me to give you notice.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Now that I understand, it's not a big deal.
Great, so, executive committee report, moving on to Josie.
Yeah, director's report, thank you. So you have the written report, and then the slides. This, this is one of the photographs from the Dunbar exhibit, which is up on the second floor, and it's in the north, northeast side of the building, so if you go up there, it's absolutely wonderful, so. And this is, this is from the website, from the county's website, I talked about the GIS mapping of library districts. This is a first, this has never been done before. And so Alex, special Allen staff started doing this for us, and then talked, we talked to people with the county, and they took it on. So if you want to know exactly where the boundaries are of all of the library districts in the county, you can see it, and you know where you live, it's really nice. We're really grateful.
Oh, helpful.
Yeah, so helpful. The downtown library reflooring will begin Monday, and will end by the 9th of March. If it ends, if we can open it sooner, we will, but we know it'll be done by the 9th. The Delta Sigma Theta, did there's a step show here Friday evening, it was amazing, and over 200 people were in the lobby, so, so let you guys know about that. These are from the library, from the director's report, these are updates, a little bit from what's printed in the director's report. Mallets Creek begins April 8th, Pittsfield and Trevorwood in September and October, we've pushed it. Fourth floor staff area renovation's underway. The final timing is dependent on furniture shipment, and we're, we're working on, on that, but it's, it's starting, that's happening. You see, you'd see wallpaper coming down if you were up in the admin area. The iPad replacement and upgrade at Westgate in the children's area will be completed by March 30th. Mallets will get the same upgrades during the closure. So we move in iPads into the children's areas throughout the system as we do these upgrades and closures.
I have a question about that. So the iPads, as a mother of a preschooler, I'm curious, like, what's new about the new iPads, that, like, are they going to be significantly different, or more stable, or something? Sorry.
Stable is important.
The difference is, on the new ones, Minecraft works.
And it doesn't crash them.
On the old ones, it didn't work.
And it crashed them.
That's the difference. They would fill up the iPads with their Minecraft worlds, and then nothing would work. So the ones that have slowly disappeared at Westgate since opening have been ones where Minecraft ate the iPad. So we now have a method by which Minecraft gets uninstalled and reinstalled every night automatically, so it will keep working, so Minecraft for everybody.
I'm sorry, can I ask a more basic question?
Yes, you can.
About iPads, I hear iPad and I think portable, a thing you carry around, are these in a fixed location?
They're in a heavy base that sits on top of the table, it's like locked into a case.
Okay.
Thank you, Eli.
All right, this is the summary of comments, this was one, final event was related to the Washtenaw Reed, and Michelle Quo sent another very nice note. Thank you for reading, it was such a thrill to meet ADL library staff and readers and be so welcomed in Ann Arbor earlier this month, thank you, so, nice that we're still good. And you have in front of you the poem that was written by Patrick, from reading from, with Patrick, that our staff printed by hand in the letterpress lab here, in the secret lab. So it's inside this, we said to you last month that we would have this for you, you have it. This is the Dunbar Center, also, I can't, I'm not sure I can see the slide, but this is about the exhibit upstairs, another slide, I don't have notes on this.
Omari's article.
Oh, thank you, that's what it is. WEMU's Art and Soul segment with Lisa Berry and Omari Rush talked about a lot of things going on in Ann Arbor, but they really highlighted, thank you Eli, that really highlighted the Dunbar Center exhibit, and encouraged people to come and look, and talk about the history of the Dunbar Center, that it's been there since 1923, it was named after a well-known author. It started out as an effort to help African-American men find housing who were working in Ann Arbor, in a very segregated Ann Arbor. And then it changed location, its name changed, and its mission changed somewhat to be more of a broader community center for a larger population. And so, it's, it's really amazing to go upstairs and look at it. This is a father who we've seen pictures of for years, and this is his little fellow who's not so little anymore, and we have featured Papa Bear Down before, but here he is with a not-so-little guy, and he was in the library during one of the coldest days of the year, and beating cabin fever. This is another young man, he was at Westgate, and he was making some new friends on Monday morning when it was cold. February means blind date with book, or DVD with, a blind date with a DVD, and this patron shared this photo with the caption Valentine's Day plans. This is one of the notices we sent out about being open during all the very cold weather. The end of January, February brought some weather challenges to us, and we said, heck yeah, we're open. And then we also assured people through a couple more nice cuddly warm type notices that we were open. The dogs, we didn't have, the fireplaces, we do, you just have to go to the right place.
You have to show the moving picture of the dog, wasn't its ear like flapping?
Oh, from the heater? Yes, yes, yes.
Were there, was the door count out?
Well, I was just fixing to tell you that, no, that's okay, for the first two polar vortex days, we ADL welcomed 7,600 people through the door across the system, that is normally, we average about 5,000 on a regular day, so it was down, but that's a lot of people. We also received dozens of positive comments on social media and hundreds of likes about, about being open. This is a Cub Scout troop that couldn't meet in its normal place, but because of the shutdown and all the, all the, not the shutdown, excuse me, I'm going to get my words off, we did not shut down at the public library in Ann Arbor, and this Cub Scout group met at Pittsfield because of that, they were able to come and meet. And they aren't the only ones, that you saw in your ephemera, a lovely letter from a gentleman who used Pittsfield for math testing, because they could not get into their normal location because of closures, and he, it's, it's a great letter, so if you haven't looked at it, do, because he, they also use Pittsfield. We debuted our ADL Tools video last board meeting for you, but we shared it with our patrons afterward, delighting our fans and listening comments like, amazing, so good, brilliant, and theremans, really? So, be about that. Finally, we launched two new social media channels for the ADL Archives, and we are now ADL Archives on Twitter and Instagram. The channels are still small, but they're growing steadily, and so far, we've featured photos and stories from Ann Arbor's past on snow, summertime, Martin Luther King Day, Black History, and more, so these are some of the pictures. For those of you, if you go back one, can you guys go back? If you know, knew Letitia Verge?
Yeah.
On the top row at the end, she was Citizen of the Year a number of years ago, she's a fabulous person.
I love this account, you should all follow it. I like how there's summer scenes in there.
Yeah, look at it hanging from the diving board, I bet that's Vets Park. Is it Vets Park?
I think it's Vets Park.
Is it Vets?
There's a little pool that's still.
Oh, okay, fun, so anyway, those are things we wanted you to know about, so if you have any questions about my director's report, I'll be glad to take those.
Josie, how, with the closed, we are going to be closed, though.
We are, we're going to be closed beginning Monday, and for a week and a half for sure, maybe a little bit longer. And we've let all our partners in the community know that we're not going to be open, so that there's preparation around the fact that the library's not going to be open. Our closure is timed for our slower time of year, and, and we pushed it as far out of the hard cold weather as we could, but we can't really take it into the spring or summer for our closure, we can't do it for our business, so.
Are there other notices being put out?
The website is noticed, all the doors are noticed. Social media, it's already been out on Facebook, we've already gotten some feedback about it, so it, we started telling, telling the public a week ago that this was happening.
Like at Storytime, or is there a verbal notice during, for folks who are coming in regularly but might not be on social media, or?
Any of the storytellers that were affected are telling their options.
Yes, right, and they're telling them where their options are.
Great.
So it's downtown that's closed, not everywhere, not anywhere else.
Right.
So there are storytimes everywhere else, so there, hopefully, people like, well, for today, no, every, you know, it's a, it's a holiday, storytime this morning at Westgate, there were 130 people there. That's a lot more people than usual. So staff are able to anticipate they're going to have larger crowds, so they, at storytimes, that we programmed around it, so we're trying to compensate. The other thing I should say publicly is that holes, if a person picks their holes up at downtown, they'll be picking them up at Westgate. The holes for downtown patrons will be separate from the holes that are currently at Westgate, so there'll be two sets of holes, that's something that we want people to know. We are going to suspend those holes for the duration of the project, so the seven-day hole period for downtown holes won't, will not count. Your hole will be there.
Okay.
If you have a hole notice that says you have a hole to be picked up, and you're a downtown patron at Westgate, it's going to be there until the project is finished, till you pick it up, because we don't want anyone to miss their hole out of confusion.
And Josie, if someone is trying to request an item which is on the shelves downtown, will there be a way for them to get it during those closure days?
The library's closed, but we're working, it's the front, front lobby area, the whole front lobby area will be, be, can't go into it, so the collections in that area, we're going to, we're going to be moving them, so we'll have access to them elsewhere, so yes, we'll be still pulling holes. I think DVDs, maybe there'll be some period of time when we can't get to the DVDs, but it won't be like the whole time.
Okay.
Yep. So, pretty much right?
Great.
So, anything else?
No? Great. So moving on.
I will say Eli's going to take, oh, and he's going to talk in Lynn's place, Lynn had a family situation, so he's not here to see this, so Eli's going to take care of this.
Okay, so just an update on the various construction projects. The downtown library, as we talked about, will close on Monday, carpet and new vinyl flooring in the lobby. We also have new lighting coming in the High Bay area and within the lobby as well, to replace the hanging lights that have been there forever with LEDs. That will be happening, they came today, but they brought the wrong fixtures, so they'll be coming back, but that is actually work that is doable while the library's open. So if they don't make that during the closure, that work will just continue, because we can rope off part of the lobby for that work. We are also doing paint in the lobby and some new direction. We are also doing paint in the lobby and some new directional vinyl will come after the paint has cured. Paint has to cure for three weeks before we can put the new signage on there. For example, the new books will have a nice new sign that says new books. The teen area will have a nice new graphics on the wall, the comic graphic novels. Holds. And the kids' area will no longer be the 90s-era Kids Connection. A nice, fresh look. Yes. That's just the entrance going into the kids' area where the Velcro polka dots are falling off the wall. So that's coming. Those are the plans for the downtown library. Because the carpet is all throughout the lobby, we will be, we need to move all the shelving that is in there. So that's, the majority of the time is staging the shelving, moving it to where the new carpet is, letting them put the carpet where the shelves had been, et cetera. So as we said, we'll have access to some of the DVDs and Blu-rays, some of the lobby collection during that time, but not all. So that will depend. However, a lot of that stuff is our, the stuff that's most in demand is in circulation. So when it comes back, it'll still fill holes. Okay?
Yeah, it won't go. It'll, it'll stay in the back area. That's how I hope you. And we're here. I mean, the staff are, we're still, we're staffing. We're using that time down here for projects that are hard to do when there are people in the building. So we're shelf reading, making sure what's on the shelf is actually showing is on the shelf and in the right place. A lot of things like that, different things.
Then on April 8th, Mallett's Creek branch will close for renovations. It'll be approximately six weeks. We'll know a little bit more as we get closer. That includes all new flooring throughout the entire branch, complete rearrangements of all the shelving. So every shelf, there's a number of new shelves coming, new computers, new kids' computers, as well as we will be bringing the category system that we use at Westgate to Mallett's Creek during that time. So you'll have a whole new group of people who are upset about that.
A whole new set of comments.
And of course, you know, the, the big advantage of the category system is that it helps patrons be more independent and access more of a collection by themselves. But there's, there's definitely a certain type of audience for which it makes things a little bit difficult.
And, and part of the time on this too is, remember, we are adding space. We're adding meeting rooms. And it's glass and frames into the concrete where there's heated water. So we, they have to be able to go through that concrete and if they hit one of the tubing parts, then they have to repair it. So those things, that takes longer than just carpet and paint.
Those two new meeting rooms, when it opens, will be bookable the same way at the Westgate. Meeting room is open. They'll both have screens in them. And so that will be nice new features for Mallett's. Those are, have been heavily in demand. Then the fourth floor project, as we talked about, the furniture has been ordered. We're just working on timelines for that. That really only disrupts the staff. So that'll be something that we work on staging as the furniture gets closer to arriving. That'll probably happen during the Mallett's Creek closure. So that, the actual installation of the furniture, we still are working with some of the trades on that. So you'll see, when you come to visit the fourth floor and April and May, you'll see a completely new staff experience back there. So that's coming. Then as we looked at the timing, we did decide that it was best to wait until after summer to close Traverwood and Pittsfield. Each one of them could need to be closed for a month. Again, we'll know better as we get, know with trades, who's going to be available and what the timing will be. But at Pittsfield, we're adding two small meeting rooms and converting the computer room into a larger meeting room, which is tentatively called son of FreeSpace. We obviously won't actually call it that. But it's the same model. It is a 35-person room that is self-bookable online, just like FreeSpace. So that will be coming up at Pittsfield. Then at Traverwood, there's only room to add one meeting room. But it will be a meeting room with a screen and a sliding glass door. And that will be where the four computers outside the computer lab currently are. So we'll be replacing those four computers with a meeting room, doing some mild rearrangement there as well. We will be taking that opportunity at least to de-Interfile the youth nonfiction, which is currently scattered in with all the adult nonfiction. That will be pulled out separately, so it's in its own section.
And some floor work there.
And some floor work there as well, yeah.
Eli, you said outside the computer lab. The computer lab is staying at Traverwood?
Yes, at Traverwood. It's just there's four computers that are outside the lab. From when we used to have classes, that would be like four for that. But now those four computers, there's relatively little usage at Traverwood. So our warn percentage is what we look at to know if we have enough computers. The warn percentage there is very low. Meaning the percentage of sessions that couldn't use a computer as long as they wanted to. That they received a warning that someone else was waiting.
And the computer lab is used, I assume, not primarily for instruction, but instead?
We do very little instruction at the branches. Most of the demand dried up for that. So it is really just a public computer lab. At Pittsfield, the main computer lab will be turned into the meeting room and there will still be the 10 computers outside the meeting room that are there now.
And we have every reason to think that's enough based on?
It's definitely enough. The usage there of the public computers is very light.
And has been.
Has been, yeah.
Since it opened.
That's about it for the construction projects. Any questions about any of that?
When was Mallett's open?
2004.
Yep.
Okay.
January 4th, 2004.
Yep. Then Traverwood opened in 2006. No, Pittsfield opened in 2006 and Traverwood opened in 2008.
And this is the first major update since?
No, actually, we've done, we did some significant cosmetic renovations at Mallett's. Mallett's got carpet once before.
When it was 10.
Yep, when it was 10 years old. So that's five years ago. And also Pittsfield already got its recarpeting. That was over a year ago.
Right, a year after Mallett, uh, Westgate.
So Traverwood is the one where the carpet is the oldest at the moment. And so that will be part of that project as well.
It's just amazing. I feel like it just opened, but.
Eli, and at Traverwood, where, I'm sorry, not Traverwood, Mallett's Creek, where are we sending people's holds and stuff to? Where do we expect people to go?
That's a little bit trickier because it's not as obvious of a, of a solution. Well, as we get a little bit closer to that, we'll look and we might reach out to people and see where they'd like them to go. It's a little bit tricky. I would suspect Westgate remains the easiest place for people to get to and it's a place that has the most room on its hold shelves. So Westgate is likely to be the recipient of closures, closure hold shelves during that time. Good question.
Oh, we talked before.
Get closer to your mic.
Get closer to it?
Closer to it.
So we talked before, I think just one-on-one, about my nerdy librarian issue with the Bisac.
Yes.
Little kids shelving. And that's just that it's very granular.
We are removing lots of categories.
Explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, so we have a process, right? You know, Westgate was an experiment. And, you know, part of, part of the thought was, well, what if it's a book about a turtle that wears a hat? Then that might be a different section. So we discovered that it's okay to put the books with the turtles that don't wear hats with the books about the turtles that do wear hats, right? Because that's not something a turtle would actually do, right? That puts it in fiction versus nonfiction. Turtles don't wear, anyway. So one of the projects that we're doing right now is decreasing the number of categories, particularly in the children's picture book section, based on our experience at, at Westgate. There's an element with these types of categories where you make the categories in hopes of, we should have books about turtles that wear hats. Right? But that's much more driven by the market than it is by our divisions, right? So we are decreasing the number of categories before we do Mallett's. And we'll see how it goes from there. So, thank you.
And we expect the categories to be the same at the two locations so that if you're used to?
We will be going back to fix the one at Westgate after Mallett's is done. That's, it's a different type of project because we can move a lot of them all at once and then have the shelveurs do the relabeling. Whereas at Mallett's, during that closure, we have to relabel 45,000 items. So it's a much larger scale project. That'll be the focus. After that's done and open, then we'll work on getting Westgate caught up with that.
Jamie, why, why, why did that become sort of a flag for you, an issue for you? Did you see problems with it when you and?
Is this book about friends? Is it about going to sleep? It's just like, once you get into an author, I think, with a little kid, you want to see all the Carmelison books about the bear. But like, it starts to be a little bit of silly with the very books for very young children, I think. I do totally see the advantage for like, people as they get older, when they get really into a niche interest area, like within mysteries, for example. But, and, but no matter what, I think you have to like, you have to draw the line somewhere and it's always going to be like perfect for some people and not great for others. But the children's picture books were just like kind of hilariously granular. You'll have to check them out at Westgate.
I will, I will have to.
I also like opportunities for librarians to get involved, so. Can't find something.
So Eli, will any of this work, if it goes into the summer, will it, will it impact summer games?
No, the whole idea is to avoid summer.
To avoid summer.
Yeah, that's why we're starting the Mallett's project as early as we are. And that's why the Traverwood and Pittsfield projects are not beginning until after summer. Because it's just not realistic to take one of our branches offline during the summer. Accepting biohazard incidents, of course.
Yes. Great. Any other questions for Eli?
All right. Thank you all very much.
That didn't take 30 minutes at all.
Thank you.
New business. So moving on to Strategic Plan Committee. We had talked about this last month, about how our strategic plan is, we'll be jumping into another series of discussions and a new strategic plan. And we had talked about a formation of a committee. There is an emotion, but it's just an open item of discussion, right? Yes. So we, we had worked with Bridgeport Consulting in the past to do strategic plan work and then also actually for our board, a board retreat before, before a bunch of us were, were actually on. Because I think the.
Last two board retreats.
Yes.
Oh, possibly last three.
No, I think Francine did one, right?
But that was Bridgeport.
It's still Bridgeport, right. Still Bridgeport. So we reached out to see who might be available. I think we're still trying to, or no, we do have a meeting on the books that's coming up. And we're trying to, I think it'd be interesting to see what our options are and seeing if we want to do something a little bit different that we've done in the past. And then I think in the past couple of years, we've, we've gone from, I think there's room for creativity instead of just coming out with this standard report on where we've, I think we've met the majority of our goals from our last strategic plan. And a lot of that's, you know, a lot of credit to the staff. But it'd be interesting to see what our options are and how we think about where we are with this building, where we are with new board members, where, where we can engage the community. And this is where the committee can, can, can really guide us on this. So, did you have, did you have any?
No, I just knew you wanted to, you, you had talked about it.
Yeah.
And the strategic plan that we're currently in, ends in June. And we're, we're essentially, we've reached it, I mean, for the most part. And we feel really great about that for that, we've, we've achieved so much of it. But the, the process can, it's up to, I mean, it's been more than one type of process over the 20 years I've been here. Sometimes the library board takes it with the staff and works it out as a group. And they, you know, public conversations are not, not so organized and structured with a consultant sometimes. And then there have been consultants who have come in and done the same thing, just as facilitators of those conversations, not leading the ideas. Then there have been consultants who have led the ideas. So it's, and various plans. And also, I think something that you're going to have to, I think we all have to grapple with is, the strategic plans have gone from being 15-year plans, 10-year plans, five-year plans to three. And there are, there are, there are some places where you're reading that, that two is enough. And so, or two is long enough depending upon what you're trying to accomplish. So that, the duration of the plan, I think is, the decision about that is just going to be as important as any other part of what we do.
It would be interesting to think a little bit about, this is coming to mind, because we've, we've had a, what, our 20th anniversary as a district library in 98?
96.
96. So that, so we had that, we, 20 years in 2016. And to imagine what, you know, what, what 40 looks like. As a just sort of, as a, as a kind of big vision exercise in adjacent to the next two or three-year sort of incremental plan. Especially with a new set of board members almost entirely than were around certainly for the, the last round of strategic planning. And I would, I have a couple of questions, but I want to, I want to like say one thing, which is because I absolutely adore Kerry Sheldon and I love working with Bridgeport and I've worked with Kerry a lot. And she is a great colleague and I, I, but I would not be like living up to my own ethics if I didn't say, if we're going to hire a consultant, we should just see what's available. So I would just ask the, the committee or whomever, as you kind of move forward, because I know there's going to be a meeting with Kerry to discuss the possibility of moving forward. But I would just say, you know, we, it's always in our best interest to make sure that we're looking out and seeing who's available to us and for how much. And then I would, I would also just say, I would sort of toss it to you, Josie, and think about like, what do you think you need right now as a staff in terms of this kind of facilitation? I certainly think the board could benefit from some rigorous facilitation around how we want to operate. And, but in terms of, you know, your, your thoughts about what the staff needs and like kind of what level of touch you want.
I think we've had, we had great success here on a number, on a couple of strategic plans where the staff, people who wanted to be involved in it, said they wanted to be involved in it. And then got together and started talking about where, the same thing, what you, where's the lib, where do you see the library in 20 years? Where do you see the library in two, five? And the staff came up with some great objectives and pretty much some big directions. And then at the same time, the library board, through facilitation, a different facilitator, were able to take those ideas and that information and then ask a lot of questions and then come up with a plan. And this was not one in the last five years. This was prior. And I think we have a staff now who would enjoy that and would like to have, would, would have the opportunity. They need to do that first before it comes to you. They need that, they need that, the freedom of that. And while I am sometimes in the room, I'm not in the discussion while this is happening. So that, we can, so I'll put that, tell you that right away.
Can you say more about why, about the reason behind that? I'm really curious.
Why I'm not?
No, why the staff wants, why they would do the work beforehand and then bring it?
Well, if Kerry asked or the consultants need it.
Well, not, no, I'm not, this is, this is not, this is minus consultant. There's no consultant involved.
There's sort of self-facilitated.
This is, this is, this is, this is a staff side. And they know, I mean, they can, they're in the profession. They're visiting other places. They have ideas about what could happen here. They are in the community in other ways other than their jobs. And so they bring that to the conversation. My role and Eli's is to ask questions along the way, poke and ask questions and get people to think in a certain more or to say, what about, what are the consequences of that kind of thing? Just not to put the damper on or shut something down, but to help people think creatively and feel, and feel comfortable doing it. And it's like, there are no bad ideas. There are just a lot of ideas. And then we'll have to figure out which ones are possible. The other side of that is the, what does all that cost? So then the management team looks at it and gets into it about what does all that cost? And I think that we do that and it's sort of a, think about it as a frame, a framework of something. Not the build-out, but the framework. And then you see that, you get that. And if you feel that you need facilitation to fill that in, to dress that up, then we do that. And that's up to you. It's entirely up to you. But it's been very successful here to do it that way. And personally, I would enjoy it if we could do this one that way. I think it would, and I know the staff would love to be able to get hold of that.
We have some elements of it from when we worked with the architecture firm.
Yes.
We have the beginnings of that. And that experience seemed to be pretty positive with staff.
Yes, it was. And, and people, the meeting was a ton of people. No one was afraid to put an idea up. It was, all the ideas went to the firm. For the most part, I think people can see the ideas or see aspects of the ideas in that report. That's what, that's what I would say to you, I would try to do.
So with this strategic plan, more so than any strategic plan I've ever witnessed, you've had buy-in, like universal buy-in, watching how it's been implemented. It's been pretty marvelous for me to see like, oh, this is a strategic plan that doesn't live on the shelf. It's on the website. People can read it at any time. Do you think that sort of origin work that you did where it was, okay, everyone had a voice? Is that part of what the success is?
I think it leads to success. The, the plan we have now wasn't born this way. It was a board document. The staff have had to respond to that document. So, what I would say to you is that because they have, and because they've done it the way they have, that it tells me that we can go back to a time when we brought you that framework. And it will be better even than what you have now.
Lynn's point about the project, process of working with the architect or architect is a really good one, because that process is super dynamic. And we had a voice, we had a place, the staff had a voice, the staff had a place. And it's, what was the staff's feedback on that outcome?
It's all been positive from what I, from what I've heard and what management's heard. They've all seen it, management, staff, and were able to feedback on it directly to us. The general staff, I think, have read, those who are interested in it have read it. They've asked questions in meetings.
You had said something about, like, have the staff work together without the facilitator early on? Have them work collaboratively? Now, you can't have the entire staff, right? So, there's going to be representative staff.
Not everybody signs up for it. Not everyone's interested.
Anyone who wants to do it can do it?
Generally.
That's really unusual.
Depends on how many people and depends on what they bring, why, and how we'd organize it. And we try our best to make sure everybody who wanted to be involved had a say. But eventually, you get to a smaller group. And smaller, for us in those days, was 15 or 20 people. And that's what I would recommend.
I have something to add, I think, to that. I wrote down that I think strategic plans are helpful to set goals, because they make them clearer to everyone. And I do think that, to Colleen's point, that like, you've been like, especially, like, you've been really good throughout the whole life of it. I feel like usually I watch a strategic plan go, wahhh. You know, and everyone's like, we have a strategic plan? But I think that you were really diligent the whole three years in making sure you checked everything off. I agree with you that that does suggest that the staff should be much more involved. But Lynn and Colleen bringing up the architect makes me think about how nice it can sometimes be to have someone who has nothing to do with an organization help with a process. So, you know, maybe we do still need some assistance.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting you don't. I think that the staff part likely doesn't. But once you get that part, you have facilitation to bring the board into it, and perhaps staff still. And you may decide you want the public's input at that point, and how you would do that. Which we've done that before, too.
Great, great. I really like Jim's point about looking further forward. And then I guess I just wanted to mention, oh, and also that it could be helpful to the board, because I don't think that we were, like, super clear with ourselves last time. But we probably could continue to use some help, like, with our own structure and where we want to get to as a group over the next few years. And there was one last point. Oh, and that you guys are just, like, really obviously overachievers, so we might as well make use of that. You know, like, I think, it's not like, I think we can expect a lot, and we, why not?
Why not?
I would like to see, I mean, we have the strategic plan, but it's not an operations document, right? So, it's, and I would really love it to see it be more aspirational. We've been on the board for a while now, and I think we have a better sense of how the library works, how the community uses the library. And what the potential is in our programming. It'd be really interesting to see from staff, because staff is the most directly, you associate, you work directly with the community, you're in the thick of it. We don't, and we have the director's report, but it'd be really, really interesting to see what kind of ideas can bubble up that wouldn't bubble up otherwise. And I'm sure, if we look at programs and we know that we have amazing staff with amazing creative ideas, I would have never imagined that we'd be hosting Bob Ross painting sessions, right? But I'm sure there's bigger ideas bubbling that we haven't, we haven't even heard of. I'm really, I'm really interested to see, to see what, you know, maybe there is this vision that's out there, you know, beyond what we deliberate on every month that we're just not aware of. Good. So, in formalizing the Strategic Plan Committee, is this the point where I have...
You don't have to, this was a discussion, it's, you don't have, there's no, it's an ad hoc committee? So, it's your discretion?
So, I would, I would, I would like to ask folks, trustees, to volunteer for this. I mean, everyone has really tight time commitments. So, we already have the executive committee, and we have the finance committee. And then this being an ad hoc committee, if you're interested in this, if you could express your commitment to myself and Josie. And then we can start organizing how we would meet and start brainstorming how we would like this to be structured. We have a board retreat coming up, which leads to the next item.
In order to form the committee, we have to, we have to vote on that. And we also have to give the committee a formal charge, if I recall the bylaws correctly. So, I don't know if we...
You could, this evening, you could have a motion to form the committee and charge it to develop a strategic plan for an undetermined number of years. Well, I mean, you could do that, but you don't have to populate it tonight.
Not tonight, okay, great. Can I get a motion to form a Strategic Plan Committee?
Sure.
Is that, sure.
So moved?
I'll second. Any discussion, further discussion?
I just want to volunteer for it. I mean, I'll text you.
Jamie, back in the fray. I would, so I would get a little more specific and, not exactly, I'm always a little rusty at how to do this, but I would, I would...
It has to have a period of time.
A period of time associated with it. So, I would recommend a year, one year from today.
And we probably want three members.
And you can have three members, only three members of that committee. And you could also theoretically have non-elected board members on any committee if you wanted. And I also, and I might also try to find some language about what the charge of the committee is. And as we move down this path, so as we're passing the resolution to accept the committee, I would say it's a one-year, for one, to establish the committee for one year. And that we would also build in at least one date in the, sometime in the next three-to-month, six-month window to hear back from that committee formally about progress, if not sooner than that. So, that would be my...
That works, that's quite a charge.
And the third question...
And would we want to chair for the committee?
You would. Is whether or not the committee, whether or not the board is charging the committee or giving the committee the charge to sort of interview and recommend consultants.
Oh, outside of the executive committee?
Yeah.
Well, you could leave it vague. I mean, I think, like, you wouldn't want to, like, make it too prescriptive their process. But it would be, like, implicit in the charge that they, they have to do the thing, and so they can figure out how they want to do the thing, right?
I like the idea of, I mean, we always talk about hiring consultants in open sessions, like, have the committee come back. With a recommendation on hiring a consultant, not hiring a consultant, given a date. And another point I wanted to make, it seems to me that our director should be officially a member of the committee, correct? I mean, that's pretty standard protocol.
It's typical, it's normal and typical.
Staff would, someone would staff the committee, and it would be the director. I, just to respond to me, like, the charge can be as, I mean, the board decides how specific or not the charge is, right? So, all of us do.
No, 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 I guess I was just putting in a plug for, maybe we don't want to be too prescriptive, because we're kind of hanging on our feet right now.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I like doing this. Keeps everybody on their toes. I've also written this resolution before, so. And amended it in real time.
What if we, what if we vote on Victoria's motion to form a committee, and then we come back next month and we have recommendations for, to further that?
So, I would...
Do we need... We don't need the charge tonight, it's just forming. I think, I think we can just go ahead and, because it seems like there's more that we can build on to charge the committee. But let's go ahead and, we were at Victoria's second, right?
And I believe that we have to, I don't, now this is where it gets weird, because to add the term, what do I have to do? Do I have to move to, move to have, or move to amend?
No, you're fine.
To say one year?
You're fine, you're fine. You're establishing it, and the duration is for one year from this meeting.
Yes, thank you.
The three members, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, so motion's passed. Great, thank you. That was, that was a nice beginning, thank you. Okay, so, moving on to board retreat date. Josie had given us a kind of a calendar over the next couple of months on room availability for our board retreat. And the executive committee kind of took a quick look at it, and then we quickly came to the conclusion that it's impossible for us to coordinate by just looking at available dates. But one thing that did come up was that, and these are available dates for spaces at, here in the downtown branch, and at Westgate, and I think Traverwood. But there's also the possibility of not meeting in the, in the library, too. So, you know, our schedule is, takes priority. And what we, so where we left the discussion was that we would ask Karen to message everyone and help coordinate when, multiple dates, and see what would work best for us.
Can I ask a question just about the retreat? Is this something that happens every year, or what's...
Every year, last year, we were at Westgate. And then we had, the one thing that we did last year was that we had pushed the retreat to later in the day so that we could accommodate folks coming up, you know, coming off of work. But it didn't really look like it had much of an impact on the number of folks who could come. Generally, it's some staff, ourselves. I always thought that there'd be tons of reporters for some reason, because I feel like it's the most exciting thing to happen in town.
It was all those newspapers.
Yeah.
And it's usually facilitated, or...
Yeah.
Facilitated.
It tends to be, it has been recently, a chance to, like, sort of step outside of operational business and just kind of give ourselves a sort of supersized space to talk about more strategic and kind of long-term planning, so.
And also get to know each other a little bit better, and why we decided to run for office, our connections to libraries, library systems, our love for books. Because we, I think the last retreat, it was really nice to hear from Jan Barney Newman and Ed Serval and their memories of the library, and then how they've looked back in their service to the library. So, it's a nice opportunity, I think, to, yeah, to connect.
It's likely to happen on a weekday during the workday, so that's another thing, just people to be aware of in terms of when, I mean, this is why it's going to be a little bit of a challenge to schedule.
And it's also public, or...
It is a public meeting. I would just say, because I was just thinking about not a library space, that if we do use a space, it would be, it should be accessible by public transportation, which I think goes without saying, although we have used space at times that is not very accessible by public transportation.
So, we've met, you've met the folks who were on the board at the time at the Gladman Barn? Where else was, where else was in?
Dykema's boardroom, we've met at a bank boardroom. But those were accessible. Gladman's Barn's not so much.
It's a wonderful problem that, like, all of our space is being used. We can't, we don't get, you know, we don't get right-of-way to it.
And it's for a long stretch of time, so it's not just... How long, how long has our board retreat been?
Four hours.
Four hours, that's pretty long. So, any discussion on rules of the board retreat or anything that our new trustees are wondering about?
Well, before we talk about that, do you, did you want to try to get some dates on the table tonight? Or do you just want to warn us that it's going to be...
It's, we just wanted to warn you that it was coming. So, what we have looked at were April, May, and then hopefully not going too far into June. But, you know, considering, you know, we've got, there's public school, spring break is end of March, and then there are holidays that are coming up in April. Another holiday end of, Memorial Day end of May. So, it sounds like we have, if I say that we have a two, two-and-a-half-month time to consider, it's really, it ends up being a much shorter or a fewer, few number of possible times to meet. But through the magic of Karen, I think, and over email, I'm sure we can come to a couple possible situations.
A doodle poll, maybe?
Yes. Or Karen.
A Karen poll.
A Karen poll. Please answer Karen, don't leave Karen hanging.
I watch your email.
Yes, please.
Great, anything else about the board retreat? Any thoughts we can get out early on?
I'm curious to know what we're, what the sort of focus will be and what we think that the focus will be, but not that we need to talk about that right now.
Right, I think the last board retreat, it was a nice opportunity for staff to report out beyond what they normally report out at board meetings. So, Eli had presented this amazing presentation on our door counts, how door counts happen, the use of the library over time, right? So, it's more in depth. I mean, I really enjoyed, I really enjoyed that. And then we had, was it Richard Murphy one year, come and speak about library spaces and urban planning?
Yeah, I'm just, I guess, I'm just wondering if there's some, if there, if the kernels of what we're going to talk about are on your mind or on Josie's mind?
Well, I mean, we have our five-month report from the architecture firm. And, you know, so there's, that's something that we can work off of. And then there's where the Strategic Plan Committee can really help guide us. So, I'd actually be interested in seeing old strategic plans, like, the first one. Twenty years ago, what did the strategic plan look like? They're available on the website, not going back that far, they're going back maybe 10 years. Like, what did they, because some of this gets to my thought about what can we, how can we prepare for the future 20 years from now when we know we don't know exactly how the library's going to be used, right? And what were people thinking 20 years ago, and how well does it mesh with the library that we have today?
I don't have it handy, but I remember distinctly a particular line item from the 1996 strategic plan, which was, "The Internet is a fad and it will blow over."
I was thinking that, I was hoping that it would have said that we would have had a new downtown library.
No, no, it's about the technology being evil.
The director did say that at that time. Ray said when the library opened in 1989, it'd be amazing to see what we have in 20 years.
And here we are. Well, I'm glad the Internet is still here. Good, good. Okay, great, any other final comments about the retreat? Great, thank you. So, Karen will follow up with us, thank you, Karen. And I'll apologize in advance that that will be fun, I'm sure. Do we have any citizens' comments then?
We do, we have a gentleman earlier today, Jeff Kovat and Kevin Austin.
Great, can you please come up to the podium? And then you have, you have three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The gentleman passing out the booklets to you, and I'm sorry I didn't bring more, is our sales associate. I'm one of the principals of a company called Expert Lighting Group. We are a very professional lighting company. Unique resume in that I have been a lighting manufacturer for a 45- or 50-year career. I would tell you 55, but it'll make me sound way too old, but it would be the truth. My partner is actually one of only 400 certified lighting efficiency professionals in the state of Michigan, and he was hired by DTE to sit in residence at Ford Land for three and a half years. And he actually wrote all of the specifications for Ford Motor for LED lighting in plants and office facilities. He left, he started his own business, I joined him as a collaborating partner, and we do sophisticated retrofit LED lighting projects, industrial, commercial, and otherwise. We have learned how to use tools that the state of Michigan provided for municipalities and school systems to make projects cash flow-free from day one. We're good at it, frankly, we have done it repeatedly. My sales associate, Mr. Oost, sitting over there, called me this morning after he met with one of you and told me about the project at a glance. And with the number of burn hours you have, I am telling you that we can probably, without question, reduce the utility costs for lighting this library by 70% and do it probably without costing a nickel of a capital budget. I know that may sound too good to be true, it's actually relatively straightforward. We're professional enough to do it, number one. And number two is, it's really utilizing the toolkit that the state of Michigan... it's really utilizing the toolkit that the state of Michigan put in place for exactly this purpose. Eli and I spoke for a brief second, and I'd be glad to stay around afterward and explain further. But my favorite line, and I'll use it for you in closing, is if light would wa, was water, everybody would be rushing to call a plumber. The bottom line is you have no idea how much of the resources of this library you are wasting in the utility bill that pays your lights. Because unlike a leak in a sink, or a toilet, or whatever, you can't see it, touch it, or feel it. But believe me, it's there. So again, I would be glad to explain what we do. It sounds like you're in the right frame of mind and position, given the other, the other renovation work that's going on at this branch. And the same, by the way, holds true and is applicable for the other branches. I will tell you that there are a number of seemingly cost-cheering or, or cost-saving methods to do projects. Most of them are blind and do not inure to the benefit of the buyer. The system the state in play, put in place absolutely does. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, Karen, do we have any other additional comments? Great, well, thank you, I think we've, we have come to an end, I will go at the gavel. Thank you, everyone.